Are you ready? Sorry. Any need for executive tonight?
I have one personnel matter to discuss.
Okay.
I have a personnel zoning.
Okay, I have a personnel rec.
I don't have any either.
No, anybody else?
Oh, mine don't like me.
I'll make a motion we go into that for those purposes.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, any need to amend the agenda?
I think we can table the access right away permit. Chad won't be able to meet with the Dollar General people about it until next week.
Okay. All right.
Make a motion, we accept the agenda as amended.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anything on the minutes of April 7? John, do you have the minutes?
Yes, I do. Thank you for asking. Joe Gagnia.
John, you got pen? This one go to the right.
It's disorganized, isn't it?
Yes, it does.
I got this one from.
We'll throw it away.
Can trade in the defective one?
More, they're gone.
Yes, but they're the orders.
Right.
Not yet. I'm too slow, you're too quick.
Don't mean to rush you.
Busy.
They're coming very well faster than that then.
Idle hands are the devil's workshop. Yeah, it's good to keep Hank busy.
All right, anything on the orders?
I have a question, 0099 rec waiting booths, what's the deal with that?
Yes, every year, one has to get into the muck at the rec center pool to do maintenance and to release water into the pool. And Joe Parnell said that we really didn't have proper outfit to keep them out of the elements.
Okay.
It'll be usable year after year.
See, there was a, for the salt shed, a $5,054 expense. Is that? Most of that has been with Casella, this here is a different name.
Yeah, that's our resident engineers, they're the ones we'd have to have watch Casella do the project. Project's pretty much done, and now it's just the last trickles of the project. So GPI has given us this bill. I can't imagine there might be more than a couple hundred dollars in the final bill just to kind of approve whatever Casella has as retainage. We hold back some money until we're sure the grass is growing and that kind of thing.
And watch, dog, clean water.
By the way, once that, once the books close on that, I will, as you have suggested, get you in a full accounting of where the dollars are going. It's looking, it's looking like we're still in the neighborhood of spending about $108,000, give or take. And the V-Trans picking up the other 80%.
Well, it'd be nice to happen.
Oh, yeah.
How it sugar is off.
Trust but verify is always the good idea.
Takes time.
So here are the orders, unless anybody has any more questions?
I just have one about the fence, because there was, but I thought they had missed a couple things the first time that was already rolled into the cost, but we still got another in charge for the, when they came back.
We paid them 90%.
Okay, that's what I was just.
Pending that.
Okay.
Corrections that they made.
All right.
So they've given us the last 10%.
All right, great.
So here's four sets of orders, Joe. How many?
Four.
They're all, oh, I have stickies on.
See how many I can find.
So there's nothing that could possibly go wrong.
He had a five, he made a point, and then a four.
Which is good luck.
He's back.
There he is. Hey, we like the other picture better, but.
More colorful.
Yes.
Come on. Just looks.
You wave with all your.
He's cuter than the other one.
Yeah. Print my agenda to keep track of these guys.
And payroll.
I just ran out of ink.
Uh-oh.
Again, kidding me?
Kidding.
You want breaking this stuff?
That's the true story of what happened yesterday.
You didn't hear that?
You're gonna take a fifth on that one.
Town manager's report.
Yes, thank you, Chair. The highway crew moved well ahead of schedule on their reportedly three-week schedule to replace the decking on Depot Hill Cover Bridge. They did it in a single week, and it was reopened by Friday afternoon, April 16th. I certainly have been across it, and it has seemed remarkably more solid. Much less of an impression of shakes and rattles and rolls. So I tip my hat to them for a nice job. As you know, we had tentatively scheduled Pittsburgh Day to take place this year, Saturday, September 4th. The town has, again, tentatively booked satin and steel to perform, thanks to, again, Amia's generosity. And we have reached out to celebrate in Vermont rentals regarding securing one or more tents like we've used in the past. They just told us today that we can hold off on making any deposit until after our May 6th planning meeting. We're gonna have a planning meeting Thursday, May 6th at 5:00. And I'll be sending out an email tomorrow to all the people who usually aren't in attendance who help make Pittsburgh Day go. If any of you would like an invitation, I'll send it along to you. And so we'll talk about what the size and scope of Pittsburgh Day should be in keeping with whatever safety and health protocols will still be applicable, if any, by then. I'm sorry to report that Nelson Brown will be stepping down as the town's recreation director on Friday, May 14th, due to his partner taking a job further north. However, I'm pleased to report that Jennifer Pop, longtime Pittsburgh resident, business owner, daycare provider, and para educator, has agreed to take the position. She'll begin working on May 10th to enable her to work with Nelson for a week of transition. We look forward to working with Jennifer and wish her the very best with her new career. I will invite Jennifer to attend a future select board meeting so that everybody can get to know each other. I'm sorry to report also that longtime Pittsburgh resident and member of the town's zoning board of adjustment, Jack Orvis, has passed away. We will be sending a condolence card to family members. Jack's passing, of course, also creates a vacancy on the ZBA, and we'll be posting notice about that shortly. At the next select board meeting, just to give you a little preview, we will look at paving bids which are due in tomorrow. We'll also, I think, hear presentations from two solar developers about projects that are being discussed tomorrow night before the planning commission. And I think the folks at the library will be talking to us about a potential coin drop event that they'd like to advocate for. Finally, I'll be out of the office next week, but I'll be returning Monday, May 1st. Select board packets therefore will be delivered later that day, Monday, the 1st, as opposed to Friday, which is the usual.
Okay. Yeah.
So, went down and looked at the bridge and what they did. It does look good, but you've still got those two by sixes underneath aren't gonna last forever.
Those were, at least some were replaced.
Some, right. But, yes, we were able to replace some. What I am proposing here is, we figure out approximately, because I mean, if the town could replace those, we probably could replace the whole deck. Save us a whole crap load of money. And maybe what we should do is just get a rough idea of what that's gonna cost so we can plan ahead for that.
Yep, good idea.
Because my biggest fear with those new boards is, some of those boards are screwed into maybe a little punky, and it may take a year or so, but those boards may begin to loosen up again.
Okay.
That's my concern, because, well, Alicia and I went down, because I had a call on it, so we went down and looked at it. And again, it looks good, but there are some of those crossboards that are not as good as they should be. So I think it's something we should look into and, and I mean, talk it over with Chad, too.
Yeah, for sure.
It doesn't look like it was that difficult for them to replace that five or six feet that they did, so.
I agree, it seemed like it happened much faster than they.
So if they're able to do that, they may be able to do, you know, the whole thing and save a whole lot of money.
You did half one year and half the next year with.
Yeah. And maybe those boards won't loosen up, but I'm afraid they're gonna, I mean, if people go through slow, it'll last a lot longer, but when they go flying in and get bouncing.
It was much better.
Wonder if there's any record of when that subfloor was put in, in that bridge. Sam Crer did a pilot work down on there.
Yeah, he did all.
Long tunnel. I don't, yeah. Probably isn't any record of that, is there?
No, I've seen photographs of decking work, maybe 15 years ago, but I have no idea how old those photos were.
I think it was longer than.
Longer than that, yeah.
That's Sam.
Sam's been dead only by 30 years.
Not to, wouldn't do us any good, but do we know when those steel beams were put in?
In the 50s, I think, Dave.
Those steel beams were put in in the 50s?
I was a kid when they were put in.
I have actually some history on the bridge, and I can share that if you know. I just don't have it to top of my head.
Well, yeah.
The bridge was doing one of these, and.
Right, I, but I remember when they did that. But the steel beams were put in before that.
I think so.
Okay.
I think Mark, I think Pete, or Dave Markowski would say that he, his father, they had something to do with putting them steel beams in there.
Okay.
They might have, just a guess, did.
Those are big, I didn't realize how big those beams are.
Big, yeah.
Kind of an interesting bridge, the floor is on them beams and they.
The bridge is like an umbrella.
Separate, yeah, other than it's tied in.
Yep.
Just an umbrella setting over the floor, kind of.
It's the same way when you redid that a number of years ago.
Yeah.
They're both separate.
Yeah. That was cool, it's quite a while when they did that one.
That was great, when I was on the end of a one-way street. I think we should, I think we should permanently close that bridge and make a memorial out of it.
Anything else for John? Select board member remarks? Any public comment? Butch?
Well, the Markowski boys, those steel beams, were in high school when they replaced those beams, because they'll tell you about working on a bridge. So it had to be sometime in, probably in the late 60s, early 70s.
Early 70s, yeah.
Yeah.
All right, update on the purchase of land for relocated Florence Fire Substation?
I'm happy to do that, but if you'd like, we have some guests that are here. If you'd like to get to those first, but it's up to you.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, let's, yeah, let's skip to new business then. All right, so yeah, review and adoption of local emergency management plan.
Yeah, Jason, of course, is here with his annual update of the emergency management planning documents. It's kind of a package of several different documents. Each year, we're required to submit an updated set to the regional planning commission, and Jason can talk about that. Go ahead, Jason.
Yeah, I went through the plan with a fine-tooth comb for accuracy. Made it, any updates that needed to be made, and worked with both John and Stephanie at the planning commission. And it's, it's pretty uneventful, and, and that's a good thing. When you're, when you're looking at the plan, I mean, everything looks good. We're doing well, they're very impressed with the, the extra appendices and the materials that we do have that'll help us in an emergency. And, and I think, as far as COVID goes, I mean, I think we did a very good job at communicating as a team, and getting the word out to our residents in a manner that informed them, but not, not overexcited them. And, and it's, it's been a hard, hard road, but I think we're probably a good example of, of how to do things the way we do them. And everybody, the, the planning commission is very impressed by the fact that all of our departments seem to work together, and it's a group effort. So we're definitely an example for others. So that's, that's all I have. As I said, I went through it, I don't see anything that stood out. If you guys do, please let me know so we can make the adjustments and, and get it off to the, the planning commission and, and be good for another year.
And just to summarize the documents in your packet, there's the local emergency management plan. There's NIM's adoption for the town. There's NIM's adoption for the fire department. There is a renewal of the town's agreement to have a mutual aid agreement through the public works department with other towns for possibility of assistance in a disaster that might hit a different town or that might hit Pittsburgh. We've already signed off on these documents in the past. If there was a motion to approve an adopt package, that would be ideal.
I'll make most.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Most of these documents, I can sign Alicia as town manager, but there's one on the adoption that requires Alicia's signature at the bottom if you circle it. Jason had a submission for another item of business, so take it away, Jason, on your coin drop idea.
Okay, so, as some of you may or may not know, I would think most of you know, I'm the founder of the Adaptive Martial Arts Association, which is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based right out of Pittsburgh here. And I founded the organization several years ago after finding that martial arts helped me manage my disability in, in ways that doctors didn't think it could. Started the organization, and the organization strives to promote health and fitness and expand opportunities for everyone based on their abilities through martial arts. And as some of you may or may not know, for the past couple of years now, I've been working in the school system. And, and so I see a need there, especially when it comes to physical education. And you have a lot of students that don't fit into the traditional physical education curriculum. And so consequently, they just sit on the sidelines, and, and they're not participating. And so what we've done is come up with a program that would encompass physical fitness, healthy eating habits, and, and the martial arts, so that, that these students can still receive their, their physical education credit. For me, living with a disability, I mean, exercise and, and physical therapy is, is a daily routine. And, and as a young adult, you get pretty tired of it. And so when I found the martial arts, the martial arts was a nice way to mask the fact that I was actually doing physical therapy. And, and so that's what I hope for these, these children, is that they'll find martial arts fun and not even realize that they're participating and learning things about, you know, healthy lifestyles and the importance of exercise. And we have Otter Valley is on board with the proposal for this program, as well as Lothrup, and it would be an after-school program based at Otter Valley. And it would be taught in-house, and it would be a series of 12-week programs that then the students would be farmed out, if you will, to local martial arts schools here in Pittsburgh and, and the Rutland County area that our organization would, if they were a low-income family or couldn't afford the academy tuition, that our organization would chip in so that they could continue their martial arts journey. And so we'd like to ask the select board for permission to host a coin drop here in town, and ask you if you would sign out off on us moving to the, to the next step in the process.
I make a motion that we allow this.
Yeah, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
One new.
Yeah, what date were you thinking?
Yeah, that was my question.
Well, actually, to tell you the truth, we hadn't come up with a date yet. We wanted to make sure that we had your blessing to do so. So as we, as we plan this out a little bit deeper, and, and get a little, little more information, and, and John helps us continue the process, then we'll come up with a date, and we'll come back to you and, and give you more information at that time.
Hey, Jason. You'll want to avoid August 28th, which is the time that we might hear about another coin drop, and September 4th, of course, which is Pittsburgh Day. And just so you know, the process, it's fine for this, for the town to approve it, but ultimately, it's V-Trans' highway. You'll need to get a permit from Brian Sanderson at V-Trans, and I can get you his contact information. And he'll give you a form, which Chief Warfoe will need to sign as well on behalf of the town.
Absolutely, thank you very much. And, and again, I just want to, you know, thank, thank the select board and the town of Pittsburgh for supporting me and, and my efforts with this. It's a, it's a passion that I have, and, and I'm glad to be in the town that I'm in, because a lot of larger towns, it probably would just get passed over, so I really appreciate you.
I'll volunteer to help with that day.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome, thanks, Jason.
Thank you, Jason. We do have Devin Neri, it appears, he's another one of our visitors, if you'd like.
All right. Yeah, so sidewalk scoping study consultant.
Yeah, Devin is here, and I can just report as a, as a tee-up that the sidewalk scoping committee, which consists of Devin and Peter Prochop from V-Trans, along with town manager Alicia Malley and Chad Ujere met to review three engineering firm submissions, visual aid here.
Yeah, they're fat.
And we now have arrived at a recommendation for the select board, so Devin, it's all yours.
Thank you, John. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yep.
Excellent. So the selection committee, which is comprised of Rod Forman, Chad Ujere, town manager John Haverstock, and select board chair Alicia Malley, and municipal assistance program manager Peter Prochop, and then myself, as well as another RPC planner Eric Hall, who is gonna be co-managing this project with me. So these are very standard format, the review process, as well as the selection process. And I'm happy to go over that quickly with you. Generally speaking, the proposals were sent out to the selection committee members for a week for review. And those members were asked to score using a formalized rubric provided by V-Trans. And then we, we collected those scores and met in person and tabulate them, which were, which is the second sheet on your packet, just highlighting the score, the rankings for each proposal. And as you could see, the Dufrain Group actually ranked slightly higher than DuBois and King, but that was really the initial ranking. And after a lot of deliberation between the selection committee members, we felt as though that DuBois and King was really the better option based on their proximity to Pittsburgh, their local expertise with the site. And their overall proposal was, was really good, and their work sample was as well. So after we ranked the technical proposals, we looked at the cost estimates. And this is what also kind of helped our decision-making as well. A couple of the proposals, the cost estimate, sorry, were over the, the budget allotted by V-Trans. And that was because they were not factoring in the 10% for the municipal project manager, which is us at the RPC. So what we did is we, we decided to give DuBois and King an opportunity to revise their cost estimate based on the actual budget. And what we were able to do is take some work off their hands at the RPC by developing the base map for existing conditions, as well as support them with some other pieces of the budget, like potentially traffic counts or pedestrian counts, depending if they'll be needed. So with that, they revised the budget to be within the, the, I believe, $27,000 budget for the scoping study. And at that point, we felt very confident that, one, they showed really good faith effort to meet our budgetary restrictions, as well as provide a really comprehensive technical proposal that we think was very well-suited for the town of Pittsburgh. So I really wanted to thank Alicia, as well as Chad and John for their, for their part in that, and that everybody worked really well together on the selection committee. So I'm just here to answer any questions that you guys might have, and looking forward to really jumping into this project.
So Devin, is it correct, at least that's how I remember it, was that while these two proposals from Dufrain and DuBois and King were very close in quality, et cetera, and we have experience with Dufrain and Group having designed our sidewalk on the Art Street of Pleasant, we went with DuBois and King largely because they had more hours for the same amount of money, so it seemed like a better value to us. Is that correct?
That is correct, yep. We do look at the total aggregate hours for the project, and that there were, I want to say 70 or 80 more hours that DuBois and King had allotted. And the hours is really based on their rate. So we felt as though we were getting a, a better deal from DuBois and King, because they have a bit of a lower rate while still maintaining that high engineering integrity from the project manager and partners from DuBois and King. Thank you, John, that was, that was an important piece of our selection as well, beyond their reputation, which is really good at, especially these municipal scoping studies.
So Devin, you said you gave DuBois and King a chance to redo their bid. Did you also give that chance to Dufrain?
We did not, only because we had selected DuBois and King as our first. We did not, only because we had selected DuBoing King as our first choice. Um so we were going to give them the opportunity, and if they had come back and said, hey, look, we can't revise this scope, then we're going to move down our list to Dufrane and say the same thing to them and say, hey, can you revise this cost estimate accordingly? Both were, I mean, I'll be honest, both were great proposals. You really can't go wrong with either. Uh but as John said, you know, the hours and then, you know, their their experience with these type of projects and being so close really kind of put it over the over the hump for us.
Anybody else have anything?
All right, so it's probably a good time for the board to decide if they want to uh accept the committee's recommendation to award the contract to DuBois and King.
I'm moved to accept.
All second. All favor say aye.
I don't even know where you're going to build a sidewalk. So is there any maps or anything?
That's what we're going to find. Tell us if and where it would be the best prospects for a sidewalk to be added to the town roads.
To me, uh before, I would want to vote on approving the money to build a sidewalk. I'd like to have more information.
We're simply talking about accepting a grant that's been given to us to study it with the town paying uh its local match of part of the grant, which is, you know, very small in the in the grand scheme of things. And then this will give us a list of where sidewalks are warranted and cost estimates as to how much they would cost. So that if we ever see future grants, we might snag fir- further money to actually build them. This is just a study to see what's feasible.
Another question that comes to my mind is this, I assume will have a at least a little impact on a few property owners. For real. And uh it would seem like uh it this would be a good, maybe you don't want to put it way off the town meeting, but it seems like this would be a good subject to be discussed at town meeting or you can have a special meeting where nobody shows up.
Well, there will be what is called a local concerns meeting. And so that'll be a part of a select board meeting, probably. And we'll invite the whole community, anybody who has ideas or thoughts or concerns about this scoping study to come forward and give us their ideas. And that'll then be um information that the engineering firm can use uh to to know what areas are seem to be popular in town to think about a sidewalk for.
I assume that uh this would be paid for as a town-wide supported venture. So.
Of course, also, if there's ever any desire to build a sidewalk, all the abutters would be notified, especially if we needed adjustments to do the construction, for example.
I don't know whether this, is it possible that it falls within the town's right-of-way or some of it may and some of it might not?
Be, and one of the things the engineering firm will will be doing is identifying exactly where we will need permission and where we wouldn't. But again, we're not even at the point of identifying which project we want to do. This is to give us the ideas and maybe a priority list of where they're most likely needed, based on foot traffic and things like that, and the existing network and how it would fit into the existing network.
Uh I would suggest, for what it's worth, that at some point somebody go around and knock on doors in the neighborhoods that these projects are goes for. We try to pick up some opinions from the people that would be directly involved before you come along with a digger and say, well, we're putting a sidewalk.
We're a long way from forks in the ground.
I'm sure.
The snow we just got.
In terms of the vote.
Another week at least.
Did you have a position on whether to awa- award the contract to DuBois and King or not? I just wanted to be sure for the house.
Uh I think I'll just set tight for this time.
Okay. It's an abstaining.
Four one zero.
Four zero.
One zero one.
Thank you guys very much. And hey, great questions. Those are all going to be answered by a scoping study. Uh just as a side note, you know, sidewalks in a residential neighborhood does increase property value. So, you know, something to think about with uh economic community uh community development. But thank you for your time. Um looking forward to working with the town on this one.
Great, thank you.
Alicia, we have someone on the in the middle of the screen there. Is this somebody from GHR Enterprises that's attending tonight?
I know, I can't see that far.
Eric Hall from Rutland Regional.
That was that was me. Hi, everybody. I was a little late here to join, but I guess I just came in right at the the tail end of our discussion. So um I look forward to working with with all of you going forward as well.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. Take care.
Were you expecting someone?
Uh yes, GHR should be along to talk about their salvage yard renewal permit.
Yeah, we'll just uh skip down and uh reveal fuel bids and uh lawn care bids.
Uh yes, uh we have um fuel bids from several providers. In your packet, you have a summary on the top. And we can address these perhaps by fuel type, if that's easiest for you. Propane, I think is relatively straightforward. We have three bidders, all with fixed pricing. Procter Gas appears to be the low bid at the same price they had last year, one point two four nine dollars.
We've been dealing with them.
They are the incumbent.
Right.
They're the current supplier, yes.
All favor say aye.
Okay. Now, um next is number two, heating oil. And we have four bids. One can get your fuels at nineteen cents over the Valero daily rack price. Champlain Valley is fifteen cents over the Valero Rutland part price. And keep a note on this, it is capped at two dollars and ten cents per gallon. Um Suburban propane bids ten cents over the Valero daily rack price. And Irving Energy chose to give to offer a um fixed price of two dollars and thirty-six cents, which I will note is twenty-six cents over the cap offered by um Suburban. Now, of course, in the past.
No, Champlain Valley.
Champlain, sorry. Um now, we should note that in the past, the select board hasn't always gone with low bid. For example, last year, uh there was a um a fixed price offered by Getcha, which uh was offered, and that was a little bit less than a competitor's uh cap offer. I got the minutes from that meeting. If you were to disregard the cap and simply look at the um nine cent difference between Suburban at ten cents over rack and Getcha at nineteen cents over rack for seven thousand two hundred gallons, I think that's a difference of six hundred and forty-eight dollars. But again, the board has decided in the past not to go with the low bid necessarily.
Well, I guess I would make a motion for the number two heating to go with Champlain Valley fuels with the two-ten cap, I think. That's for that one.
Just make a motion on that?
I did make a motion.
Your second?
I'll second it. Nobody else has.
We need to yell aye loudly so everybody wakes up.
So next is um diesel, on-road diesel. Um that is fifteen cents a gallon over rack price by Champlain Valley. Uh and um Irving has a fixed price of two dollars and fifty point seven cents or point two five oh seven per gallon. I'm not sure how that compares with the rack. I was not able to find the rack information online publicly. But given um Irving's bid on propane, I would suggest, I would assume that it's substantially higher than what we're seeing from the Champlain Valley fifteen cent over rack price.
Are we currently with one of them now or just?
Yes, I believe we are with Champlain Valley on the diesel, on-road diesel.
I'll make the most we stick with Champlain then.
Go ahead, Joe, give me all your.
I'll second it.
All favor say aye.
Okay, and then finally, off-road diesel. Um Champlain Valley is fifteen cents over the Valero rack price capped at two-ten. And Getcha fuels is at nineteen cents over the daily rack price.
All right, so where did you find, because where did you find that their off-road was capped at two-ten? Was it in the letter? Because it wasn't on the sheet. I didn't get time to read all the letters. That was my, they said it was cap, but didn't have the cap on the the sheet.
Uh paragraph three of Champlain Valley, two thousand gallons of off-road diesel capped at two-ten.
Okay.
Yep.
There isn't a big difference. I think it'd be nice to keep them two few minutes together.
I would make a motion that we go with Champlain Valley fuels on the off-road.
Favor say aye. All right.
Let everybody know.
Great.
We tried young with consolidating with some other communities. In one year, we talked about it, but that never.
It is a, it is a good idea. You get the volume, you get the volume purchasing power, no question. Something we can certainly look at for next year. Thought about that on paving as well. Paving's more tough because you have different quantities of rack that might, different towns might want. But I don't see why fuel would be that tough.
Seems like we talked about it. Never, never succeeded.
I'm going to make a note. Thank you.
All right, lawn care bids?
Yes, we have um three bids, two that are competitive and very close. Um Bradley Keith um bid four thousand six hundred fifty-eight dollars per year with a one-time three hundred and fifty-dollar discount by working at Pittsburgh First Response for free for a period of time. When you, when you take that subtracted amount into into account, you end up with a total for two years of eight thousand nine hundred sixty-six dollars divided into the average yearly amount is four thousand four hundred eighty-three, which is a bit more than Furnace Brook Landscaping, who bid four thousand three hundred twenty dollars per year. They both do seem to plan on twenty-two mowings per year with um Bradley Keith at a hundred seventy-four dollars per mow and at Furnace Brook Landscaping at a hundred and sixty per mow. Again, the difference is only a hundred and sixty-three dollars a year or three hundred and twenty-six over two years. I will point out, I don't want to have my thumb on the scale, but we have used Bradley Keith for quite a number of years and have been quite pleased with his work.
Yep.
Well, we've also got a young, up-and-coming landscaper here too, so.
People deserve it or or bid the the lower price on it. That's not fair. You got, if they're comparable work, we're going to lower guys to get it. They had an equal chance.
Right. But we do have been have been pleased with, you know, Brad's services. So there's, and it's not that much of a financial difference.
No, but but again, at at one point, Brad was up and coming too and.
But if you continue to give it, that's a little bitter. Pretty quick, you gotta get anybody to bid on it.
So I'll make, I'll make the motion that we go with Furnace Rock Landscaping.
I'll second that.
All favor say aye.
Let everybody know.
And was the third one not comparable as?
Yes, I can give you the name.
No, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. It was several thousand dollars more overall.
Was quite a difference.
Yeah, that's right. That was Janowski.
All right, and I don't, so we're, I guess we'll, we'll wait on the salvage yard if we're, if you're, if you are definitely expecting someone, okay? So we'll um, and I think we're going to jump back into old business.
Okay.
So uh yeah, update on the purchase of land for the relocated Florence Fire Substation.
Uh yes, no sco- no closing has been scheduled yet, but it could be soon because the purchase and sale agreement that we've signed recalls for a closing within thirty days. Um we've talked about the source of funds for the purchase. I gather that the uh the former and current police chiefs have discussed it, fire chief, I'm sorry, have discussed it. And the consensus seems to be that um between perhaps ten thousand dollars from the annual fire department budget and ten thousand dollars from the fire department capital account, that could, that could suffice to uh close on the on the purchase. That's a twenty thousand dollar purchase price.
That doesn't create a hardship in any other way for the finances of the fire department.
We don't think so. We're close enough to the end of the year that should should manage it. And the thought was to take, on the sale of the the last ladder truck, which we got seventy-five thousand, take ten thousand of that. If we had to dip in to the Edison Fund, we could, but we would like, actually, we've got a meeting, I think it's next week. So we really hate to touch that right now at this point. So I think we can do it and uh come under budget all the way around. And it's kind of a little brain it was to buy the property back anyway, so it's a it's a win-win. And it's nothing that, we're probably building next week anyways.
Right.
I'm hearing no objections, so that's how we handle it.
All right, and then adopt local hazard mitigation plan?
Yeah, this is a holdover from the last meeting. Um as we discussed, I did contact Stephanie Bork at the Regional Planning Commission, who's been facilitating the drafting um of our updated LHMP. And she confirmed that the mere use of the term river corridors on a key on a map in the plan does not carry with it any obligation to adopt any corridor, river corridor regulations of any kind. So I think she um clarified that in her email. And all that really remains is um adoption of it.
All righty. All favor say aye.
Am I slacking?
That's for Alicia.
Fine, be that way.
All right, here we are. Um okay, and then consider retention of Sullivan and Powers as a, our continued as our auditors.
Uh yes, as again, last meeting, we had, I'm just going over for further research. We've been in touch with Chad, and he's kind of explained his response to our couple of questions for him uh about how they set fees and um what about the possibility of getting cozy with an existing incumbent firm? And so that's in your packets. I'd be happy to read it if you'd like. Um we've also been in touch with VLCT that didn't have any particular guidance on how long a co- town should be with a firm before they think about something else. But they say if you are thinking about something else, they do have forms that would help us uh generate um some bids from other firms. Um so I guess it's really your pleasure as to whether you'd like to renew with Sullivan and Powers for one year or a three-year package, as they've uh offered us with relatively low annual increase.
I'm over, we 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 renew with Sullivan Powers for three years.
I'm swat second that.
All favor say aye. Any opposed?
Well, you asked if I was opposed and I said aye.
Um well, I guess that leaves, um all we have left is a salvage yard.
Yep, first of all, I have signatures I need. Yep. First of all, I have signatures I need from the select board on the two marked places. They're identical contracts. And uh on those pages, you can squeeze your five signatures on the three lines. That would be great.